Carmen Guzman.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Guzman Lombard and I live in Hell's Kitchen. I have lived in that apartment for 26 years and on that street for 40. We have seen a great increase in what gentrification has done to the city. I would implore you to look at these people and not just see numbers, but see the stories behind it. I am a mother of two very productive members of society which I managed to raise despite the fact that I am bipolar. I am an active member of my church where I volunteer and I teach English. And I hope to also return to the workforce someday. So I would just implore you to not throw these people away as refuse, garbage, or member of society that don't mean anything. We are the people that hold the glue of this city together. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers are Vanessa Robinson, Anita Long, and Joan Hill.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Hill and I've resided in the Bronx High Bridge section.
Just one moment, Ms. Hill. Is Vanessa Robinson here? Okay. Vanessa Robinson is first, then Anita Long, and then you, Ms. Hill. Just have a seat and we'll get to you momentarily. Thank you. Vanessa Robinson?
Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa Robinson. I'd like to point out three interesting things that I think, I won't say they've been overlooked, but they haven't been stressed enough. First of all, you have a large amount of individuals who are on fixed incomes, senior citizens, who are paying student loans. When you add student loan costs to your rent, these are fixed sums of money that you can't change it. You're stuck with whatever it is that they give you. Yes, you can ask for a deferment, but that doesn't eliminate the expense. The expense is there and is going to be there. I spent 12 years with homeless prevention for the Homebase program, and you will find that a vast majority of individuals are now rent subsidized. There's Link, there's CityFeps. We used to have Section 8. We don't have Section 8 anymore. So just the fact that we have Link, we have CityFeps, we have SEPS, the SEPS program, you have all of these different rent subsidy programs. Why? When I rented my apartment 36 years ago, all we had was Section 8. Why do we have all of these subsidies? Because people can't afford to pay their rent. That's why. Bronx Housing Court, when you go to court, 90% of the landlords that walk in that door walk in with an attorney. 0% of the tenants walk in with an attorney. They have to manually navigate that themselves. That's why I've applied for the Guardian-Adlightam program to go in and assist individuals who are unable to navigate that process, to help them with it. But where's the navigation for the average person who's walking in the housing court? They have no idea what's going on. There's no help, there's no assistance. So you're asking to, as you're considering raising rents, consider these other issues. Senior citizens that are bogged down with student loans, I'm one of them. Individuals who do not know how to navigate the court system but are expected to comply. Landlords, there are no more, where's the five-year lease?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you because your time is up and we have to move on to the next speaker.
One more point. Reinstate the five-year leases, reinstate the three-year leases, and stop forcing rent hikes every one in two years.
Thank you. Anita Long.
Good evening. My name is Anita Long. I am a resident of the Bronx on the Grand Concourse, and I've lived there for over 25 years. Because of regentification, gentrification, I do understand how the concourse is needed and it's wanted, not by me, but by other people in the market for money. I live in a building where my landlord has decided to do multiple MCIs. I've already, he did the kitchen and the bathroom. Now he's decided that the pipes in the kitchen and the bathroom is not included in the kitchen and the bathroom MCI, which is the water pipes. But how can you have a functional bathroom or kitchen without the water pipes? It should have been included in the first one. Now I'm looking at a list of MCIs that's being given to the tenants who has to pay for it. Landlords do not need the rent increase. They are already getting money because of the MCIs. And in each borough, because of gentrification, landlords are jumping up and doing multiple MCIs within one building. And that's unfair to the tenant, and we do not need the rent increase. I urge that you vote 0% for rent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Hill? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Hill and I reside in the High Bridge section of the Bronx since 1984. I feel a rent increase would be detrimental to many low-income and fixed-income New Yorkers.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Okay. A little closer? Okay. I feel a rent increase would be detrimental to many low-income and fixed-income New Yorkers like ourselves. A rent increase would force long-term rent-stabilized tenants like myself to choose, like many have said before me, between paying the rent, buying food, paying the utilities, or buying their medicine. Such increase in rent would put many rent-stabilized tenants in danger of losing their apartments, leading to increased homelessness and displacement. So many of our Bronx neighborhoods are rapidly gentrifying with newcomers who are earning significantly higher incomes than our median income of $26,000 in High Bridge. The higher-income bracket will increase the cost of housing and cost of living in our neighborhoods, not to mention the Jerome Avenue rezoning possibly displacing many. A lot of us already live in gentrification zip codes such as 10451, 10452, and many others. It is often hard, impossible, for rent-stabilized tenants to get the landlord to do repairs without calling 311, HPD, or filing a housing court case. A rent freeze is desperately needed in order for us to keep our rent-stabilized apartments and remain in our neighborhoods. I speak not only for myself, but for other rent-stabilized tenants who cannot attend tonight or possibly afraid to voice their rights, fearing harassment or retaliation from their landlord. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speakers are Fausto Nunez, Topasio Betem, and Ramon Catala. And these individuals need interpretation.
Hola. Yo me llamo Fausto Nunez y vivo en el 1665 de Monroe Avenue, apartamento 1A.
Hello, my name is Fausto Nunez and I live at 1665 Monroe Avenue, apartment 1A.
Mi queja es que ya yo comencé tres años atrás pagando 950 cada mes y ahora estoy pagando 1300 y tenemos que hasta dos días sin agua caliente y se pasan tres, dos, tres días que no limpian el edificio.
My complaint is that I moved into my apartment three years ago paying $950 a month and now I'm paying $1,300. And we go up to two days without hot water and they go for two or three days without cleaning the building.
Y por medio que no limpian hay muchas ratas y cuando se daña algo, por ejemplo una llave, tiene que llamar a 311 porque el super no vino al menos que le paga.
And because of this, there are lots of dirt and rats, and whenever anything breaks, for example faucet, we have to call the city because the super does not come unless he gets paid.
Lo que yo quiero es que tratar de congelar la renta, por favor, y que no se hacen subiendo. Thank you, porque tal vez pueden ayudar.
What I'm asking is that you please freeze the rent and to stop it from rising. Thank you, because perhaps you can help.
Thank you. Topasio Betem?
Tell him to bring it to the front desk.
You can bring it to the front desk, it'll be circulated.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ramon Catala and I live in 1685 Topen Avenue in the Bronx where my building was falling apart. Most of the tenants who live there live for 30, 40, 50 years like myself. We have a new landlord. His name is Ken Way from Cash, way back at management, the worst in the world. He took a lot of money from HPD to repair our building, but never happens. But guess what? The rent went sky-high, like my rent, $243, some 10,000, 200. My case is still in the housing court filing, but nothing has been done yet. That's why we don't need no more rent increases in our lease. Chairman of the board, join us, the tenants of New York City, to keep this city moving forward. Together, we can make a difference. Thank you for the attention.
Thank you. Is Topasio Betem here? The next three speakers are Elizabeth Thompson, Wanda Swinney, and Vera Roman.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Thompson.
Good evening.
I live in Moisture Pillar Building. I've been there for 32 years. I photocopied all my bad points that I had in the building, just like Pat did, for 32 years. I didn't know I had lead paint in my kitchen until 2011. That's when they removed it. The thing is, do y'all listen? Do y'all, and look at all those papers we sent in? I don't think so. I'm still complaining. He had me in court for a lot of things that he's supposed to have done since I've been in the building. I had to pay this man $10,000. My apartment should be the Taj Mahal. It do not look like that. And I'm still asking for your help. Get at Moisture Pillars, he's one of the slumlord from Brooklyn to the Bronx. Y'all are not doing your job. You might be the nicest person in the world, but when it comes to the people of the city, y'all don't give us no help at all.
Thank you. Wanda Swinney?
Hello, how are you?
Good evening, thank you.
Okay. First of all, what I want to say is I'm tired. Me, personally, I'm tired. And I know I'm tired for a lot of people because we work hard every day and our money, our money does not work for us, okay? It doesn't work for us and our families. My rent is already high. When do we, when do we live? We have the right to be able to afford a roof over our heads too. I've been in the shelter twice in my life as far as I'm concerned because I had to see it again with my daughter, okay? And we deserve to have someplace to live too. Why should we have to pay for everything that we make and go work hard for and give it away all the time? And we have, get nothing back. We're tired of suffering, okay? I am, I'm tired of it. And my thing is that it looks like this is a design to have an ongoing displacement going on here. It's ongoing. This has been going on for a long, long time. Enough is enough, okay? And I mean, real New Yorkers and Bronx residents like me, like myself, can't afford another increase. We already dealing with enough with landlords taking advantage of loopholes like MCIs, preferential rents, and the vacancies bonuses. I need to live in the Bronx. I have lived in the Bronx for over 22 years, okay? I have six children, 16 grandchildren, and one great-grand. When do we live? Okay? And I know I don't have a lot of time to talk right now, but what I want to end this with is fight, fight, fight! Housing is a right!
Vera Roman? Is Vera Roman here? The next three speakers are Linda Seward, Nova Lucero, and Carlos Garcia.
Good evening. My name is Linda Seward and I reside on the Grand Concourse. Born and raised in the Bronx, 67 years old, and I've seen a lot. I'm coming to you today as humble as I possibly can to ask you to open and search your hearts tonight as you hear all of our testimonies. The city is hurting, the people are hurting, and an increase will make more homeless families sol-- excuse me. Being an advocate, I have spoken to numerous families in my building and in the Bronx, and they have shared with me that other family members had to move in with them because they would have become homeless and they could not pay their rent. And I think it's really sad that now you have grown children coming back home and you have families that are doubling up, tripling up in a household. You could have two and three families living in a two-bedroom apartment. Unless you have a family member or a friend in the rent stabilization apartments, you cannot understand what we're going through. So close your eyes and imagine how you would feel. We are trying to stay afloat as a nation with the many cuts that are coming our way, and you know what I'm talking about. We should be able to be comfortable in our homes. We are strapped as the landlords use all kinds of strategies to increase the rents. So we're denied services, and you've heard about the services that have been denied. We have to take them to court. And as if you remember me, my testimony last year, in June last year, I was, my building was out of gas for 12 months. It took 18 months for us to get gas, and harassment is still going on. They use that form of harassment so that you can move out, and when you move out, then they can jack that apartment, rent up more. Our lives, our lives, the city's lives, is in your hands. So please, carefully, listen and search your hearts. And I just want you to know, riding the train here today, there's an app called Roomy App.
Excuse me, can you wind up your testimony?
I surely will.
Thank you.
But I think you need to know about the app. That's the app that's out here now for people that are looking for roommates because nobody can afford the rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Nova Lucero?
Hello. My name is Nova and I'm a member of the Northwest Bronx Community Clergy Coalition and the tenant organizer with the Met Council on Housing. I'm currently, I'm an organizer with the Met Council on Housing and we're currently fighting the city's plan to rezone inward. I was born and raised in the Northwest Bronx. My family has been here since the 1960s. And I know that the history of this rent guidelines board is that it was created because tenants fought hard vocally and militantly for their rights. The city eventually gave in because they had to. They knew that tenants couldn't work in the factories if they didn't have a place to sleep, and they knew that without tenants, we wouldn't have a city. Tenants like us are the backbone of this city, and so preserving rent stabilization is the key to keeping our city. During the Giuliani and Bloomberg administrations, the rent guidelines board consistently passed large rent increases as high as 8.5% for two-year leases. From 1968 to the late 80s, the rent, the average rent guidelines board increase was between 6 and 10%. And from the 90s until the early 2000s, the average rent increase was between 2 and 4% consistently until finally our rent freeze in 2015. Our incomes didn't increase during this time, and due to greedy politicians, we have weak rent laws. Our current city government has been more focused on increasing the supply of subsidy programs and luxury housing via rezonings instead of utilizing tools like this board to keep rents low and make up for the past over 40 years of unjustified rent increases. We have lost over 100,000 rent-regulated apartments in the past eight years. Homelessness has increased 41% under Governor Cuomo. I can tell you as a former housing specialist for families in shelter and case manager for Homebase right next door, I mean, in Grand Concourse, that the best way to keep our city running and to have it thrive is to keep rent-stabilized apartments affordable, especially when landlords have effectively lobbied to have apartments deregulated when they reach $2,700 after harassing us. Until we get the laws in our favor, the rent guidelines board is the most influential system that impacts how many tenants get to stay in their apartment or end up on the street. Tenants don't deserve a rent increase. For over 40 years now, landlords have received ample rent increases, and we have long waited for justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Garcia? Is Carlos Garcia here? Are you on your way down? Is that you? No? Okay. The next three speakers are Carmen Vega Rivera, Cheryl Westbrook, and Eric Borenstein. Okay, it's on the way.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Carmen Vega Rivera and I live in a rent-stabilized building, 888 Grand Concourse, for 38 years. I'd like to provide you with some data that you're aware of and why, more than ever, we deserve a rent freeze. When landlords continue to make bigger and bigger profits while denying us service, and in 2016, their net operating income grew by 4.4% for the 12th year in a row, we deserve a rent freeze. When landlords, when landlords use MCIs and last year were granted over $186 million in MCIs alone, and in the last six years landlords have made over a billion dollars in MCIs, we deserve a rent freeze. When landlords can't increase rents through individual apartment improvements, fees, and vacancy bonuses, we deserve a rent freeze. When one-third of the tenants in New York City have preferential rents, we deserve a rent freeze. When the majority of rent-stabilized tenants are not able to afford their apartments based on the federal standards of affordability, which is in your own report, we deserve a rent freeze. When 42% of the Bronxites are paying more, over half of their income in rent, we deserve a rent freeze. When families are double and triple up to afford their rent, we deserve a rent freeze. When the homeless, when the homelessness has increased for the ninth consecutive year, over 59,000 people stay in shelters on average, we deserve a rent freeze. When landlords continue to deregulate rent-stabilized apartments using numerous tactics in their favor and there is less affordable housing, we deserve a rent freeze. When neighborhoods throughout the city are undergoing rezoning, which will add pressures for harassment in order to increase rent that will ultimately displace us, we deserve a rent freeze. When salaries have not increased and the COI for Social Security increased by 2% this year, we have to make choices about whether we pay our rent, food, medical costs, transportation, etc. We deserve a rent freeze. I end with this. The increases you are proposing of .75 to 275 for a one-year lease and 1.75 to 3.75 for a two-year lease is unrealistic and not sustainable considering the data presented that you know about. It is time to level the playing field. We don't want high rent increases because we know rent is already too unaffordable for many Bronxites and New Yorkers in general. We deserve a rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl Westbrook? Cheryl Westbrook? Let's let the speaker give her testimony, please.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Westbrook. I was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York. Finding myself retired, divorced, and an empty nester, I could no longer afford the rent in Brooklyn. I came to the Bronx through the Affordable Housing Program. God blessed me and I wind up in a senior, low-income housing building. The building opened in 2015 based on age and income. A year later, the rents began to increase. Two seniors have been evicted. Every month, seniors are receiving notices for non-payment of rent because they cannot afford to pay the additional $10 based on Social Security and pensions. So I am requesting, on behalf of all the seniors in the city of New York, in the Bronx, New York, in Brooklyn, New York, in Staten Island, New York, in Queens, New York, that the rent increase remain 0%.
Thank you. Eric Borenstein? Is Eric Borenstein here, please? The next three speakers are Cesar Yah. I'm sorry. Are you, Mr. Borenstein? Can, you want to speak from where you were sitting? Well, just a moment. We'll get you a mic.
No rent decrease. No rent. No landlord. Tenants take over your apartments. You have the numbers, you have the money. The parasites only have the hope that their exploitation will continue. Tenants of all countries, unite!
Thank you. Cesar Yoc, Rafael Peña, and Juana Herrera.
Good evening. My name is Cesar Yoc. I have been a resident of my haven for over 24 years. I'm a member of Bronx Community Board One and also a member of the National Association of Mental Illness. As a member of the Board's Development Committee, I have seen presentations from above, from above toll developers who are proposing affordable housing. But when they show the rent breakdown, it is easy to see they are not affordable at all. Most of them are for higher-income brackets. In addition, the architecture is geared towards particular groups instead of the diversity of the city. As a member of NAMI, I know how difficult it is for members to get work because of stigmas and difficulties dealing with their illness. Those who face rising costs for demedication. In addition, many residents cannot find high-paying jobs to deal with high, rising expenses. The lack of educational resources or resources or innovations is not preparing us to deal with climate change and dwindling natural resources. This is a quote about diversity. It comes from science. It says, "Diversity in our ecosystem allows the systems to adapt to change." We need diversity. It is required for the city to adapt to climate change. So we need all of us here to be a part of it.
Thank you. Rafael Peña? Rafael Peña? Just stay right there. Go ahead, Mr. Peña.
So hello, everyone. My name is Rafael Peña. I've been a, well, I was born and raised in the Bronx, been living in the, well, born and raised in the same tenant building as well. And so I'm just here pretty much to like just testify along with everyone here, all the tenants who are pretty much in disagreement with the rent increase, right? And so personally, I just want to also voice my frustration with the various slum lords that I, along with other tenants, have experienced, right? And it's constantly been like a revolving door, where we'll get one different other landlord, but I mean, I'm pretty sure if anything, it's just them changing the name on the management, right? So if anything, it's a different face with the same slum lord deeds, right? So, right now, according to the management, right now, he's actually filing an MCI off of bogus claims of some bogus repairs that were obviously never made. And because of that, there's, you know, along with the MCI application, there's this push for an MCI rent increase, right? And I, again, I, along with all the other tenants in my building, right, since I'm here representing them, we are in completely disagreement with the landlord. And we're actually just finding, we're looking for any support out there, but I'm pretty sure we also, we can also express the solidarity that we have with all the other tenants against the common enemy that we have, which is the slum lords, right? And so, it just, it bugs me to, just to even think that these rent increases, the fact that the one, they're permanent, and the other fact that like, how they're going to charge a whole rent increase when there's constantly, there's been a historical lack of repairs in the building, right? So for the last two months, I've actually had a hole in my kitchen ceiling and there's been, again, I've been living in that apartment for 29 years and there's been the same issue with that same leakage in the ceiling, right? And we've told management and nothing happens, right? So, again, it's completely unjustifiable, especially for the Rent Guideline Board folks there, to like try to mediate, right, between the tenants and the owners when there should be a, when there should be complete support on behalf of all the tenants and not just for the owners, right? Because we are pretty sure that if anything, like people have said here, the owners make bank, right? They make billions of dollars. And of course, according to like their bogus claims of wanting to like, you know, push for the MCI, you know, increase. And so what I'm asking for, I'm pretty sure what everyone here, I'm pretty sure what everyone here is also asking for is for the Rent Guideline Board to, one, I mean, I agree with the gentleman over here, one, to either be abolished completely and have a Rent Guideline Board that represents the interest of the workers, because I'm pretty sure, I'm going to finish right now. So I'm pretty sure, right, just looking at the Rent Guideline Board people right there, right? No one there actually reflects, well, say like the tenant members, right? No one there, the tenant members, no one there actually reflects the demographics of the tenants in my building, right? And those people who have been living there longer than I have and they deserve to have, you know, they deserve to have a safe place to be living in, right? We've fought the harassment of the landlords. So I just want to say again, solidarity to all the tenants out there. Thank you for coming out. And I'm pretty sure the struggle is always going to be continuing until we actually have a Rent Guideline Board that represents the interest, the full interest of the tenants and never, never for the owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Juana Herrera?
Hola. Mi nombre es Juana Herrera. Vengo porque este, yo en mi trabajo me lastimé la columna y ahorita no trabajo. Yo viví en Manhattan y este, según me vine para el Bronx pensando que iba a pagar menos renta y...
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Juana Herrera and I'm here to share that I was injured. I had an injury recently. I injured my back. I came here to the Bronx from living in Manhattan because supposedly I was going to be able to afford rent here.
Me vine para el Bronx pensando que iba a pagar menos renta. Ahorita estoy pagando 1,575. Ya el lease me vence en julio y me están aumentando 125 dólares.
Supposedly, so I came to the Bronx because I was supposedly going to pay less rent. Currently, I'm paying 1575 and my lease is up in July and they will increase, they're telling me they're going to increase my rent by $125.
Mis hijas son las que me ayudan. Mis hijas tienen familia y ellas son las que me ayudan con billes, con la renta y espero que ustedes nos pueden ayudar porque para mí es injusto.
My daughters, they support me. My daughters have their own families and they support me with my bills and rent. And I'm here because I hope that you can help us.
¿Qué quiere que uno viva en la calle? Eso es injusto. Uno trabaja y pero cuando uno se enferma, tiene uno un accidente, ¿qué puede uno hacer?
What do you want? You want us to live in the streets? That is unfair. But when we get sick and when we have an accident, how are we expected to work that way?
Espero que ustedes nos puedan ayudar con la renta. Mínimo con la renta, por favor. Ayúdenos. Mucha gente está en una situación muy difícil. Con la comida, medicina, cuando uno se enferma. Por favor, ayuden a uno.
I'm here to ask for your help so that you can help us at least with the rent. Please help us. Many people are in difficult situations, not being able to pay for food or for medicine. So at least help us with the rent.
Muchas gracias. Se los agradezco mucho y espero que nos ayuden, por favor. Gracias.
Thank you. I want to thank you so much and I hope that you can help us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Rosella Newton, Antonio Mendoza, and Alberto Ortiz. Rosella Newton?
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rosella Newton. I live in a rent-stabilized apartment. My rent went from 1951-58 to 2065-88 with MCI increase and lease renewal increases within six months. Rent has gone up, but new landlord has become neglectful to the building, which is also a common problem, even though they use MCIs as excuses for improvements to building, but all it is is another rent increase. In two years, my rent will go up again. My husband is disabled and I am retired. We live on a fixed income. How can I afford these increases? My children and their families, my neighbors, my community are finding it increasingly difficult to find and stay in affordable housing. We are being displaced out of our communities. With the MCI increases and lease increases alone, six families have had to move out of my building because they could not afford the rent. My family will be next if my rent continues to go higher. I am worried I will not be able to live in the Bronx or anywhere in New York City, which has been my home for over 60 years. I am asking that you consider a rent rollback or a rent freeze or whatever it takes so that we can all survive and live as human beings that are rightful members of this society. Thank you.
Thank you. Antonio Mendoza?
Buenas tardes. Good evening. Good evening. Mi nombre es Antonia Mendoza. Mi building es un desastre. Cucaracha ni se diga. Ratones ni se diga. No dejan dormir a uno. Encima de la cama de uno, ruñándole los pies, los ratones. Y el ando brilla por su ausencia. Excuse me, just take a pause so we can get the interpretation, please. My name is Antonia Mendoza and my building is a disaster. There's cockroaches everywhere. There's mice everywhere. They don't let us sleep on our beds from, uh, cucaracha roaming around our feet while we're in bed. And the landlord is completely absent. Y están anunciando que viene el aumento. Viene un aumento de 5% para el mes de agosto. No podemos. No podemos pagar ese aumento. Porque mi esposo coge 16, 700 dólares y la renta es de 575. No nos queda dinero para el teléfono, ni para comer, ni para los pasajes, ni nada. Excuse me, we need to get the interpretation. Thank you. They keep announcing that there's going to be a rent increase. They keep announcing that it's going to be 5% rent increase in August and we can't, we can't pay this increase. My husband earns only $700 and our rent is 575. We don't have enough money left for our phone bills or for the train fare. ¿Y cómo vamos a hacer cuando venga el aumento? Que no va, que, no, no, no va a quedar nada de lo que agarra mi esposo. Yo no, yo no, yo no agarro nada. Yo no, no tengo cheque, no tengo nada. So what are we going to do? So what are we going to do when we have this rent increase? That we're not going to have any money left from what my husband gets and I don't get anything. I don't get a check. I don't have anything. I don't make any money. Espero que nos solucionen ese problema. Eso es un grave problema que tenemos en el Bronx. ¿En qué vamos a hacer? Tenemos que estar ahí esperando que ustedes nos solucionen algo. Di de algo, di. So, we hope, I hope that you can help us solve this problem, this serious problem here in the Bronx. And what can we do besides wait for you to help us solve this problem or to solve this problem for us? Por favor, le pedimos de, de favor, que hagan algo por el Bronx. Por favor. Please. We want to ask you to please do something, do something for the Bronx. Please.
Thank you. Thank you. Alberto Ortiz?
Muy buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Alberto Ortiz. Vivo en el Bronx. Hace seis años que estoy peleando con el landor para que me arregle.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Ortiz and I've been living in the Bronx for six, and for six years I've been fighting with my landlord for them to fix, to get repairs.
Soy retirado. Vivo de un cheque. No tengo ayuda. El 90% de la renta se me va en la renta. Simplemente, 63 dólares me sobra para pagar deducible, pagar con Edison, y pagar mi teléfono. Tengo que buscar dinero para poder solucionar mi vida.
I'm retired. I get one paycheck and I have no support. About 90% of my paycheck goes to rent and what I have left, about $63, goes to pay deductibles, can Edison, and my phone bill. I have to find, I have to find solutions. I have to find money to be able to sustain.
A veces tengo que acostarme sin comer. No tengo para, para el deducible de mi medicamento. Muchas veces no puedo divertir, ni calzar, calzado porque no tengo dinero.
Sometimes I go to sleep without eating and sometimes I don't have enough money for my deductibles. Sometimes I can't, I can't afford to have fun or even wear good shoes.
Adicional, no quieren meter el MCI para poder perjudicar los inquilinos en toda la ciudad. ¿Qué más quieren hacer con nosotros? Ponerlos a dormir en el subway, en los parques, o en los puentes?
On top of that, they want to stick the MCI on us. What do they want to do? They want to cause harm to the tenants around the city? What do you want us to, where do you want us to sleep? In the subway, in the parks, or on the bridges?
Ya estamos cansados de los landores. Tantas subideras. Los edificios que nos sirven. Vandalismo, drug addiction, todo lo que hay por ahí y nosotros que no valemos, no lo valoran. ¿Por qué razón estamos así?
We're tired of the landlords already. So much hiking up the rent. The buildings are no good. All the vandalism, all the drug addiction, and what about us? Are we not valuable? Are we not worth it?
Lo único que les gusta es llenarse los bolsillos de dinero y al inquilino que se fastidia. Eso está muy mal. Tenemos que echar hacia adelante y luchar contra esos pequeños animales que se llaman landores. La economía está bien mala. Hay que luchar.
All they care about is money in their pockets and for the tenants to be screwed. We have to fight. We have to fight these little animals called landlords because the economy is really bad and we need to stand up.
Y en su conciencia está el aumento o el 0%. Esperemos que tengamos el 0%. No más aumento. No queremos eso en nuestro pueblo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And the 0%, the 0% is in your conscience. We hope that we can have 0% and no more hikes for our people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Jessie Hamilton, Martine Rivera, and Yoselyn Gomez.
Buena noche. Mi nombre es...
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Martina Rivera y soy líder de casa. Primeramente, vivía en Manhattan. Me aumentaron la renta y tuve que coger para... Me aumentaron la renta y tuve que coger para acá, para el Bronx.
Good evening, my name is Martina Rivera and I'm a member of Casa. They hiked up my rent where I used to live and I had to come up here to the Bronx.
Aquí estoy pagando 1200 en un estudio pequeñito, que no cabemos el niño mío, yo soy viuda. Estoy pagando más de un 60% de mi salario, hay día que no tengo para comer.
I'm living, I'm paying 1,200 dollars a month for a small studio for me and my child. We don't fit the two of us. I'm a widow, and 60% of my paycheck goes to pay rent.
Mi pregunta es, ¿por qué premian a los landores con un 20% cada vez que desaloja una familia de bajo recurso?
My question is, why do you always reward landlords with 20% whenever they displace a family from an apartment?
No le veo sentido, no tienen respuesta, ustedes están puesto ahí para buscar un balance entre los landores y los inquilinos, y no están haciendo su trabajo.
I don't see the sense in that, you have no answer, you have been placed there to be a balance between the tenants and the landlords, and you're not doing your job.
Muchos de nosotros vivimos con ratones, cucarachas, pero a pesar somos personas de bajo recurso, pero tenemos nuestra conciencia tranquila porque tenemos moral, lo que muchos de ustedes que tienen dinero no tienen.
Many of us live with mice and cockroaches, but we have what you don't have, which is a clear conscience and moral.
Y todo lo que se siembra aquí, se le devuelve a uno. Yo soy pobre y moriré pobre y estoy orgullosa de ser pobre porque nunca no tengo fábrica para explotar personas, ni estoy haciendo dinero, a cotilla del sufrimiento de la gente de bajo recurso.
I was born poor and I will die poor, and I am proud of that because I don't have a factory where I'm taking advantage of low-income people.
Y una cosa le digo, por cada uno de ustedes, de los que apoyan este sistema, que se le ha cogido con destruir a la persona de bajo recurso, por cada uno de ustedes, nosotros somos un millón, eso es todo lo que le tengo que decir.
And I have something to say to you, for each one of you who decides to support this system that is bent on destroying the lives of low-income people, there is 1,000 of us, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Is Jesse Hamilton here? Yassalyn Gomez? He is here, where?
Jesse, you go first.
Okay, you're next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jesse Hamilton. I'm the father of Senator Jesse Hamilton from Brooklyn. The senator was born here in the South Bronx on 149th Street in Jackson Avenue. My home has been here all that time. I live in an apartment that I moved into in 1971. I am an originator of Ostos Community College, I wear the cap, without seven members, you would not have this college. What I'm here today to say to you is I need to reach into your conscience, because that's vital in the decision-making which affects so many people. My concern is this, we have landlords who have bundles of money, and we have poor people who are just trying to survive. I need you to search your mind's eye to figure out, how will you resolve this issue? If I take three things, one, I take David from the biblical times, I take Pharaoh or Goliath, and the third thing I take is the rock. I see you as the rock in this process. The voices of the people here are significant to provide the wind necessary to move the rock, but we need you to make it happen for us. Sling that rock, kill that Goliath. The landlords have done nothing but demean, demise, and hurt people year after year after year. It's your conscience that's gonna be making decisions here, it's not the people. You've heard the voices, and you understand what the problem is. Now it's time for you to take action. No rent increase, thank you.
Thank you. Yassalyn Gomez.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Yassalyn Gomez, soy líder de Casa, vivo en el 750 Gran Concor, building de uno de los landos que quizá lo que están representando aquí los landos lo conocen, Ved Parkas.
Just a moment, we need to get the interpretation.
Good evening, my name is Yassalyn Gomez, I'm here as a Casa leader, and I live at 750 Grand Concourse, which belongs to a landlord that many of you here may have heard of, Ved Parkas.
Déjenme decirle algo a ustedes señores, honorable personas que están allí sentados. Ustedes ven esa gente de aquí, morenos y latinos, esas son la gente del Bronx, decente, respetuosa, y muy ofensiva y dispuesta a pelear cuando le toca sus intereses, pero nosotros no le vamos a tocar a ustedes. Nos vinieron a traer aquí porque no querían hacer sección en el Bronx, pero nosotros somos gente decente.
Thank you.
So, if you look around the room, the people that you see here, black and Latino and others, are the people of the Bronx. These are decent people, they're respectful people, but they're people ready to fight. You came here to hear from us even though you didn't want to have this hearing.
El hecho de que no haya muchos asiáticos y muchos blanquitos aquí en el Bronx no es que no somos decentes, somos gentes decentes, pero gente de bajo recursos económicos, que si a uno de ustedes le quitan un plato de comida de la mesa cuando tienen hambre, ustedes se fajan a pelear con el primero que encuentra.
The reason that you might not see a lot of Asians or whites around here is not because we're not decent people, we are decent, hard-working people, but we fight. If anyone came to take the food off your table, you would also fight back.
Por eso, en esta tarde, nosotros queremos decir a ustedes que no tengan miedo de venir al Bronx, que nosotros somos gentes decentes, pero gente que luchamos por nuestro plato de comida, que cada vez que ustedes aumentan la renta, le tengo que servir menos comida a los hijos míos para que todos puedan comer.
And that's why we're telling you, don't be afraid to come to the Bronx, we're all decent people, but we fight for a plate of food, and every time the rent goes up, I have to serve smaller servings to my children because we have to cover the rent.
Y ahora le quiero decir a la audiencia, el señor Diblacio tiene cinco representantes en esta mesa, dos de los landos y dos de nosotros los tiene. Diblacio debió de haberles bajado raya a ellos, que no aumenten un centavo de la renta, lo hizo el señor Diblacio, o ellos vienen a aumentarnos la renta hoy. Se lo digo a ustedes para que estén preparados y sepan cómo es que las cosas vienen, esas cinco personas son mayoría en esta mesa, ellos son la mayoría, ¿por qué Diblacio no le tiene una raya? Ustedes no van a aumentar la renta.
We have to get the interpretation.
So, on this board, we have five members who are there representing the mayor, we have two members representing real estate, and we have two members representing tenants. I ask you, why, do you think Diblacio gave his five representatives a directive, gave them a line to follow on defending tenants? Because that would be the majority.
Entonces, yo no estoy aquí para dar detalles, que las ratas, que los ratones, que la comida de los hijos, yo estoy aquí y no para pedirla a ustedes, para que ustedes su conciencia, si la tienen, el otro año no aumentaron la renta, señores, miren, esto es una eviction que yo recibí en mi correo ahora mismo, para venir para acá, y yo estaba que no podía ni caminar porque me quieren sacar de mi apartamento.
So I'm not here to talk about details about rats or mice or food or children eating, I'm here to talk to you, to try and reach your consciences if you have them, because what I'm holding here in my hand is an eviction notice that I just received, and I could almost not make it here tonight because I felt like I couldn't walk, but I'm here.
Entonces señores, esos son 1,616 pesos de renta que yo debo, si ustedes aumentan un peso más, ustedes saben lo que va a ser señor Diblacio, apaga más por los chertes, porque nos vamos a tener que tomarnos un cherte, por favor, sean más conscientes, yo entiendo que los landos tienen su business, pero nosotros tenemos nuestro trabajo que no nos da para nada, el salario no son aumentado todos los años como aumentan la renta, entonces, ¿hacia dónde vamos a llegar? ¡No queremos más aumento de renta, por favor!
Thank you.
So I currently owe... So I owe 1,616 dollars right now, and maybe you can all tell me where that money's gonna come from. I understand that the landlords run their business and they're trying to make money, but we work for nothing and we can't keep up with as much as it rises, so you tell us how you can help us.
Thank you. This is an announcement, if you wish to speak this evening, you need to register in the lobby, and registration will close at 8:00 PM, so if you want to speak, be sure you sign up before 8:00 PM. Can we get a translation of the announcement? Ah, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.